From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Boards are reconvene. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
No, he doesn't.
Adorable.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
Chairman, members of the board, I brought with me our Pet of the Week. Her name is Chloe. Chloe's about a 10-week-old, if you can believe it, 10-week-old Shepherd mix. She's about 15 pounds, so she's going to be a large breed dog, probably around 50 pounds or so if she's fed the right way, kept active and socialized. She's going to make somebody an awesome family pet, and she's available for adoption right now at the Kern County Animal Shelter.
Thank you, she's really beautiful. Thank you, Nick. Thanks for the great work that you do. Okay, at this time, we'll begin by considering the Consent Agenda. Gendes are located on tables near the door for anyone to get a copy. All items listed with the CA above the item. Number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to the vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence, with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. Now, at this time, we'll read the Consent Agenda items. So on page two, items three through seven, items 10 through 12. Page three, 13 through 15, and 18 through 19. Page four, items 20 through 25. Page six, 26 and 27. On page six, items 28 through 32. Page seven, items 33 through 38. On page eight, items 39 through 46. Page nine, items 47 through 54. On page 10, items 57 through 61. And that concludes the Consent Agenda items. Is there any member of the public that would like to discuss or comment on the Consent Agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will ask the board if the board members have any discussion or would like to remove an item. Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Members cast your vote.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, at this time, we will now consider item number one under Resolutions and Proclamations. This is a resolution honoring Supervisor Zach Scrivner for his numerous accomplishments as 2022 Chairman of the Kern County Board of Supervisors, and I will be making this presentation. Someone'd like to make the motion?
Salute.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Members cast your vote.
Excuse me, the motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. So it gives me great pleasure to make this the first proclamation of my chairmanship to find colleague Supervisor Zach Scrivner. He's a great leader, and his name starts with an S, and that's more than Scrivner, that is service, that is sacrifice, that is smarts, that is standing up for safety, standing up to Sacramento. He has led our board not just last year, but through many years, and I respect him greatly, and I look forward to following in his footsteps. He represents the great District Two. It's economically and geographically diverse, it's an enormous district. Not only that district, but he's led our county as a whole, so thank you, Zach. So I'm going to read all the wherethes because it's important, and it's a testament to our last chairman and Supervisor Scrivner. So whereas in 2022, Second District Supervisor Zach Scrivner proudly served as Chairman of the Kern County Board of Supervisors for the third time during his esteemed tenure in office. Under his leadership, the board achieved myriad successes ranging from diversified economic development to critical investment in vital county resources and understanding how state policies and mandates impacting Kern's oil and gas industry are affecting the county's tax base and revenue. Chairman Scrivner led the board in voting to place Measure K on November 2022 ballot, which was successfully passed by unincorporated residents and will now provide Kern County with a locally dedicated and controlled revenue service to maintain vital public safety and other frontline services within the unincorporated communities. And Chairman Scrivner also led the board on needed investment in recruitment and retention efforts at the Sheriff's Office, including the creation of a new position, classifications to support sheriff deputies, and providing needed public safety functions, extending a series of competitive bonuses to lateral transfers, as well as a series of robust incentives and pay increases for existing Sheriff's Office personnel, setting the board up for further success within the Critical County Department in 2023. And Chairman Scrivner continued the board's investment in public safety by allocating $10 million to the Fire Department to address a backlog of equipment and station repair needs, as well as an additional $18 million investment for needed new equipment, such as the replacement of a heavily-used Vietnam-era helicopter, which is crucial for saving lives and battling wildfires. And Chairman Scrivner supported the county in fighting an epidemic of homelessness, leading the board in its implementation of local rules aimed at disrupting and eliminating encampments in public areas. The expansion of teams of county mental health professionals, law enforcement officers to engage in encampment hotspots, successful creation of a safe camping area at our M Street Navigation Center, and creation of navigation centers in Arvin and Delano, along with breaking ground on two new multimillion-dollar inpatient psychiatric hospitals that will be utilized to address the needs of those individuals walking our streets, suffering from severe mental illness. And throughout the past year, Chairman Scrivner led the board in historic investment in Kern County parks, prioritizing Kern County's quality of life with the help of federal economic assistance, State of California Prop 68 grant funding, and other revenue sources, as well as approving nearly $45 million in park renovations and upgrades. And after many Kern County library branches were closed due to COVID-19 pandemic, Chairman Scrivner led the board reopening all branches and approving the expenditure of almost $13 million in state grant funding for major infrastructure improvements at 17 library locations throughout the county. And in regard to economic investment in diversification, Chairman Scrivner worked to strengthen Kern County's position as an agricultural and energy leader through streamlined permitting and long-term planning, and throughout the past year, approvals were given for the construction of the new Hard Rock Hotel and Casino Project that will have an annual $80 million payroll and employ up to 3,000 people from our region. And finally, Chairman Scrivner led the board in approving historic $400 million joint project with the City of Bakersfield and SciFi Networks to install a fiber-optic high-speed internet network through Metro Bakersfield designed to bridge Kern County's digital divide and increase connectivity. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, does hereby commend and thank Supervisor Zach Scrivner for leading the Board of Supervisors and the County of Kern in these outstanding accomplishments during his chairman, adopted this day, January 10, 2023.
We thought we were going to get a picture, so that's why we were standing there looking like a couple of deer in headlights. But, well, first of all, Jeff, I want to thank you for your kind words, and I look forward to your leadership. You're already off to a great start, obviously. You're going to do a wonderful job for us, but I accept this humbly because these are, of course, not my accomplishments, these are the accomplishments of numerous department heads, all of my four colleagues, and the thousands of county employees that work so hard for our citizens each and every day. And so I thank you and look forward to a great year under Chairman Flores. Thank you.
Okay, moving on in the agenda, that brings us to item two under Resolutions and Proclamations. This is a resolution positively honoring the memory and service of John Spalding, our Workforce Development Board Member and dear community leader. Supervisor Perez will be making this presentation.
Motion on resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Members cast your vote.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
home around Christmas time for the homeless shelter. John and Diana never missed one. And what was so gracious and incredible about having them over every single year in acknowledgement of how many of our children in this community spend Christmas at the homeless shelter, they would bring, of course, so generously pajamas for these children, but they were always so gracious, and John made a point of it, to bring a little something for my boys. Every time. And he loved giving Jude and Noah the little flashlights. Do you remember that? Mr. Chairman and colleagues, it is one of the greatest privileges of my tenure as supervisor on this board to be able to stand before you today to present this resolution in memory of one of Kern County's finest citizens, Mr. John Spalding, for his 15 years of service on the Workforce Development Board. John Spalding was a longtime labor leader, community activist, personal mentor, and most importantly, a friend to so many of us. John Richard Spalding was born September 20, 1940, in Normal, Illinois. He was anything but normal. He was a patriot, too, having served this great country in the Army proudly from '63 to '66. Following his service in the Army, John returned home to marry the love of his life, Diana, in July of 1966. What a crazy time that was. Fun time. John and Diana have been blessed with four children, Laura joins us today, five grandchildren, and two great-grandsons. John was a graduate of the Operating Engineers Local 12 Apprenticeship Program, as well as a graduate of the Trade Union Program at Harvard University. From the penthouse to the pavement, John was our man. He worked with the Union Program, excuse me, he worked with the Operating Engineers from '66 until his retirement in 2005. But as most of us know, he didn't stop there. Following his retirement, John began working with the Building Trades Council in 2007, and only recently retired this last year as the Executive Secretary. In addition to his role on the Workforce Development Board, he served as President of the Central Labor Council, Vice President of the Kern County Democratic Central Committee, and Member of the Greater Bakersfield Separation of Grade District, Kern Transportation Foundation, Kern County Shriners Club, Kern County Scottish Rite, and the Kern County Freemasons. He didn't miss a beat. John dedicated his entire life to making Kern County a better place for all of us. On November 8th, Election Day, he said he would be with us and hold out, and he did. John went home to be with the Lord. His legacy and the work that he has done here will live on forever through the memories and the thousands of lives that he personally helped achieve upward mobility. John Spalding was simply the best of us. Therefore, it is a lifelong privilege to present this resolution to John's beloved wife, Diana, in honor of John's decades of service to Kern County. Diana, this resolution has been signed by our Honorable Chairman and the other members of the board, presented to you today, who stands here as John looks down on us, recognizing a lifetime truly worth honoring. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for this. John loved labor, and he truly wanted to do the best for everyone. And on behalf of him, thank you for this.
I'd like, it's very fitting that Supervisor Couch made the motion, or the second on the motion, because John Spalding really loved you and always spoke highly of you, and he appreciated the friendship that he conveyed with you or had with you. He was never a stranger or never shied away from that fact. So what a beautiful day to honor him. And John stayed in the light. He was the light, and, you know, he will guide us. Thank you.
He loved his meetings.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. This brings us to our next item, number eight, under Resolutions and Proclamations. This is an item to proclaim 2023 as National Eligibility Workers' Recognition Month, and Supervisor Couch will be making the presentation.
Motion on the proclamation. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you, the motion is approved, all eyes.
Supervisor Perez, I appreciate you mentioning that. I was eager to make that second because he was the best of us, and he, just a great guy, outstanding person, and I was fortunate to be able to know him just a little bit. Great guy. But I'm here today to help the board recognize National Eligibility Workers' Recognition Month. We all get calls to our office from people who are having a tough time and need assistance, and we turn them over to the Department of Human Services. An eligibility worker almost invariably will end up helping them find some sort of assistance, some sort of benefit that they're entitled to have, to help them get back on their feet. And so these are folks that are dealing with people at a very, very difficult time in their life usually, and I couldn't do it, but they do it extremely well. And so it's unfortunate we can only honor him once a month, or once a year for a month, but this is the month. And so I'm honored to present this proclamation. I'm going to read it, and I'll turn it over to Lito and allow him to introduce the people behind me that do the work I just discussed. Proclamation reads, "The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed January 2023 as National Eligibility Workers' Recognition Month in Kern County. This recognition has been entered into the official board minutes, signed by our Honorable Chair, Jeff Flores. It's dated today, January 10, 2023." And I'll turn it over to Lito Marilla, who runs, or maybe it runs you.
Runs, yeah.
Department of Human Services.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Good morning, Chairman Flores, members of the board. It's an honor to be here, and thank you for this proclamation proclaiming January as National Eligibility Workers' Month. Standing with me today is Adriana Kessler. Adriana, if you could raise your hand real quick. She, like me, started her career as an eligibility worker with the county, so I'm happy to say that. Also standing with me are a few amazing eligibility workers is Giovanni Dominguez, Candace Thomas, Tanisha Thompson, Yuri Ortiz, Anna Garcia, and Angelica Gobana. I wish all of our 650 eligibility workers could be here today, but that's really impossible. They're working tirelessly in all of our Bakersfield offices and seven district offices. Our eligibility workers, also known as human services technicians, or HSTs for short, provide a crucial service to this community. And really, just to kind of put it in perspective, the magnitude of what they do on an annual basis, they determine eligibility for well over 15,000 CalWorks cases, well over 85,000 CalFresh or previously food stamp cases, and close to 200,000 Medi-Cal cases. And you're talking about a large percentage of our population here in Kern County is who they support. And aside from that, they also provide or determine benefits for foster care, homeless assistance, and general assistance. They show up every day, working through all these issues that a lot of people and families bring to them, and those less fortunate, and they do it with a smile. If it weren't for the eligible professionals with the Department of Human Services, those in need would really be lacking housing, food, and medical care they so desperately need. They do this work each and every day, and it's not easy and very challenging, obviously. As a previous eligibility, I could tell you, it's one of the most challenging jobs you could have in this county. Since the pandemic, staffing's been an ongoing issue for us, like many other departments, and we're always looking to add additional staff on this amazing team. And so what we've done is we created an HST video, just to kind of give you a glimpse of what it's like to be an HST for a day. So if I could have the amazing team at KGov play that video. Imagine a career where the mission is to help the community and individuals meet their basic food, shelter, and healthcare needs. This is the work of a human services technician or HST.
I am a human services technician, three. I am what they call intake. We screen people to see if they are eligible for any of our programs. It's an adventure every day. The most rewarding is knowing that I help someone, help them get out of their situation, that is, most of the time a bad situation. We are sometimes the last resort a person has. There was a client, a gentleman homeless, he came in, and it was hot outside, it was the summer. He gave us all his paperwork out of a torn plastic bag, and when I asked him for his ID, he pulled it out of his boot, and it was a military ID. And it upset me that this man had nowhere to go. So being able to help him made my day. I was able to help him with food stamps and Medi-Cal. I granted his case immediately. I walked him over to get his EBT card, and before he left, he shook my hand and asked if I was going to be his worker. And I said, "No, you were going to be transferred." "Why?" He said, "You're the only person that's been nice to me in a long time." And that has stuck with me. It is a stressful job, but yes, it is worth it. You are making a difference. You will sleep better at night knowing you helped someone.
So I'd like to close just by commending each and every single one of the eligibility workers here with me today, and also I have some eligibility workers in the audience. If they can stand, please. I know some of you are out there. I want to thank you for this proclamation and recognizing our eligibility professionals for their dedication to families and children in Kern County. So thank you.
Thank you, Lito. Thank you, all the members of your department and the work that they do on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
If it weren't for the eligible professionals with the Department of Human Services, those in need would really be lacking housing, food, and medical care they so desperately need. They do this work each and every day, and it's not easy and very challenging, obviously. As a previous eligibility, I could tell you, it's one of the most challenging jobs you could have in this county. Since the pandemic, staffing's been an ongoing issue for us, like many other departments. And we're always looking to add additional staff in on this amazing team. And so what we've done is we created an HST video, just to kind of give you a glimpse of what it's like to be an HST for a day. So if I could have the amazing team at K-Gov play that video. Imagine a career where the mission is to help the community and individuals meet their basic food, shelter, and healthcare needs. This is the work of a human services technician, or HST.
I am a human services technician, three. I am what they call intake. We screen people to see if they are eligible for any of our programs. It's an adventure every day. The most rewarding is knowing that I help someone, help them get out of their situation, that is, most of the time a bad situation. We are sometimes the last resort a person has. There was a client, a gentleman, homeless. He came in and it was hot outside. It was the summer. He gave us all his paperwork out of a torn plastic bag, and when I asked him for his ID, he pulled it out of his boot. And it was a military ID. And it upset me that this man had nowhere to go. So being able to help him made my day. I was able to help him with food stamps and Medi-Cal. I granted his case immediately. I walked him over to get his EBT card. And before he left, he shook my hand and asked if I was going to be his worker. And I said, no, you were going to be transferred. Why? He said, you're the only person. That's been nice to me in a long time. And that has stuck with me. It is a stressful job, but yes, it is worth it. You are making a difference. You will sleep better at night knowing you helped someone.
So I'd like to close just by commending each and every single one of the eligibility workers here with me today. And also, I have some eligibility workers in the audience. If they can stand, please. I know some of you are out there. I want to thank you for this proclamation and recognizing our eligibility professionals for their dedication to families and children in Kern County. So thank you.
Thank you, Lito. Thank you, all the members of your department and the work that they do on a daily basis. Thank you. Okay, the next item under Resolutions and Proclamations is item nine, to proclaim January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Kern County. And Supervisor Peters will be making this presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Flores. I'd like to make a motion on the proclamation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is approved.
Good morning, Chairman Flores, members of the Board. It goes without saying that even one case of human trafficking is too many. Unfortunately, California has had a higher number of human trafficking cases than any other state in the U.S. Due to Kern County's unique location within California, along two major travel corridors, we've also seen a disproportionate number of these cases occurring in our own backyard. This is unacceptable. We need to be doing everything we can as a community, as a county, to put an end to this. And fortunately, we have groups like the Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking, and we have Dustin Contreras and his team here from this coalition that are going to talk with us a little bit more, but they're out there raising awareness about this issue and fighting to put a stop to it. And so it's my honor to share this proclamation today from the Kern County Board of Supervisors, declaring January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Kern County. It has been entered into the official Board Minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman, Jeff Flores.
Thank you, Chairman Peters, Mr. Chair, and rest of the Board. Good morning. Thank you, the entire Board, for your continued support with the Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking and the enduring fight to eradicate human trafficking in Kern County. The estimated number of people in situations of trafficking rose by 12% between 2016 and 2021. The latest international consensus study found that some 26, 27.6 million people around the globe are living without freedom to choose how they live and work, according to a recent report by the International Labor Organization and the International Organization for Migration and a nonprofit called Walk Free. In the midst of the pandemic especially, we found that vulnerabilities among some populations had gotten worse. Some people saw their employment opportunities vanish. Many were willing to take any type of job in any condition rather than leave their households without an income. As the ILO and the IOM and Walk Free report indicates, migrant workers, women and children, are especially vulnerable to falling prey to traffickers. The same thing happens when other global events, as armed conflicts, natural disasters, and social exclusions exacerbate vulnerabilities for people already experiencing difficulties. As a result, new migrants, women, and children will remain in a disproportionate disadvantage. Children will always be our most vulnerable and potential victims of trafficking. The Kern County Department of Human Services has partnered with KCAT before and after the inception of its CSEC unit. To talk more about what DHS is doing, Program Specialist Macy Alton will share a few words, and I will conclude after Macy with a short closing. Macy.
Good morning, everyone. Per request, we wanted to provide a summary of what we learned at the 2022 Just Conference, which focused on human trafficking prevention. Fourteen representatives from Kern County attended the 2022 Just Conference, including Child Protective Services, Kern County Probation, Redeemed Home, and the Open Door Network. There were 93 speakers and trainers at the convening, with 46 educational sessions going on over the three-day period. Some of the training topics included: evidence needed for prosecution of traffickers, strategies to best identify victims, therapeutic aftercare strategies, resources for a therapeutic session, how to best work with survivor advocates, prevention strategies, and resources for victims in congregate care. Some of the overall takeaways from the convening included a need for communities to designate specific, trained, human trafficking points of contact within law enforcement agencies, legal authorities, service providers, and community agencies. Communities can best combat human trafficking with a robustly trained workforce within all of these areas. The resounding goal of the convening was to get to a place where we have all of our victims thriving, not just to cease the harm. At the convening, we sought prevention resources that could easily be shared with the public. Quick guides on how to keep your kids safe from online sex traffickers have been purchased and will be available for the community on January 17th at the Fox Theater, where KCAT will be sponsoring a viewing of the human trafficking movie titled Wake Up. That event is free for the public on January 17th at Fox Theater at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Macy. As some of you know, recently in the headlines, there was a human trafficking investigation, which recovered 16 potential victims of human trafficking here in Bakersfield. Father knew he had to do something to help his wife and child get out of the situation they were in, so he left them to get help. Law enforcement arrived, along with our dedicated advocates from the Open Door Network and the DA's Office Human Trafficking Task Force, and began to provide hope and warmth for these cold, hungry, and thirsty victims, ranging from eight to 66 years old. Many of the people you see behind me, and many of the people that you don't see, were instrumental in restoring humanity to all of those potential victims. The most impactful moment was watching that eight-year-old clinging to a teddy bear, smiling as she was relocated with her family, saying the simple words, "Thank you." So I will pass along to everyone that is involved in this work, thank you from her, for what all you do to end human trafficking in Kern County and the world. Some of the partners that are here and are not here, I have to go without mentioning Canyon Hill Women's Ministry and City Serve. Cynthia's here from the representative. We have probation, the Open Door Network, DHS. That's just the tip of the iceberg in what it goes to, to end human trafficking here. And the Coalition's been here now 11 years. We've been doing this every year. It's good to remind everyone. We plan to do the proclamation outside, but due to weather and electrical issues, we got to be careful, make sure we don't electrocute anyone. So we'll be doing that at the city council chambers at 1501 Trucks, and you're all welcome to attend. But thank you to the Board again for proclaiming Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Kern County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will consider item number 16 under Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the Board on any matter, not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the Board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the Board at a later meeting. Also, the Board may take action to direct the staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making your presentation. Thank you. Do we have anyone that would like to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Item number 17, Board Member Announcements or Reports. Anybody?
I do.
Okay, sure.
Plugged in.
Oh, sorry.
It's easy to miss.
There you go. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Rick, you're still here, so I will not be crying this morning. But I am incredibly joyful and grateful for all that you bring. I'd like to speak, Chairman, for a moment with your indulgence regarding an appointment to, or reappointment, to the Kern County Planning Commission, of which all of my colleagues agreed to today unanimously. No surprises there. But often, items on consent do not get highlighted for a whole host of reasons. But today is a momentous opportunity. It is very personal and important to me, and I am so happy to see you here with your family. And I'd like to say a few things about you. Rick Judge brings something very unique to the Kern County Planning Commission. With his extensive knowledge in construction, retail development, land use regulation, along with his keen business acumen, Rick is always looking for opportunities to bring economically sustainable and impactful development to Kern. And as a champion of the county, Rick is committed to giving back in every way that he can. He stays true to the values that have been a pillar to his family's success. Of course, from Rupinder on down, family first, and always be in service to this community. I like to say a rising tide lifts all boats. This family is more like a tsunami. I've said that before, because I mean it. Today, along with his family, they own and operate Countryside Corporation, a multi-layered organization, specializes in real estate acquisition, retail development, and owns and operates multinational brands: Shell Gas, Subway, Taco Bell, Pizza Hut. All the best-looking ones in town are theirs. Countryside Car Wash, Me and Ed's Pizzeria, and Retail Centers. Countryside has been in business for over 25 years and currently employ over 500 people in Kern County and Tulare Counties, many of them in my district. Thank you for that. Rick has made history by being the first ever sick American to serve as Chairman of the Board for the Kern County Planning Commission, and the first ever sick American to serve as Chairman of the Board of the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce. That's a big one. I'm excited to have him bring his decades of experience to serve another term on the Planning Commission, where I got my start, Rick, where his fellow commissioners have elected him to serve as this year's Vice Chair. Rick, to you and your family, congratulations on the unanimous reappointment to the Kern County Planning Commission. It's a testament to you and your family's great legacy and service of this community. I want to thank you personally for being such a decent human being, who I can always count on to be a good faith player and to uphold the highest standards, both in business and personal ethics. So thank you. This county appreciates you, and we look forward to your continued service. Thank you. That's all, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez, and we echo those sentiments. Congratulations. I just have a quick thank you and some goodwill. This last Saturday, we did our first community cleanup in Oildale, and I'd like to thank everyone that was a part of that. Kern County Public Works, Varner Brothers, Oildale Community Action Team, Salim and Vince Fong, Senator Shannon Grove, my staff, and many community volunteers coming together to make visible impact in Oildale, and not just to clean it up, but to show that we care and we're going to hit the ground running and not stop. And so I just wanted to say thank you for that. Okay, next item. Moving on to number 55, we will hear under Public Services. A presentation on the Health Initiative of Public Health and Behavioral Health and Recovery Services called Grounded in Health 2023, and Bryn Kerrigan will be making the presentation.
Good morning and Happy New Year, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. As you stated, my name is Bryn Kerrigan, your Director of Kern County Public Health, and I'm joined with Mitchell Patel on behalf of Stacy Kuhwahara, the Director of Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, who got called away to jury duty, to provide you a presentation on the launch of our collaborative health initiative called Grounded in Health 2023. Mental and physical health are interconnected and can be positively and negatively impacted by how our bodies are cared for. In fact, research has shown that people with mental health struggles are more likely to have preventative health, physical health conditions, and people with long-term physical health issues often also suffer from a mental illness. As you are aware, Kern County suffers from disproportionately high rates of obesity and deaths due to chronic conditions like heart disease and diabetes, with more than 71% of our adults being either overweight or obese, and having more deaths due to diabetes here in Kern County than anywhere else in the state of California. Our physical and mental health were also significantly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. The stay-at-home order brought pretty much all physical activity and exercise to a screeching halt, and many of us changed our eating habits relying on meal delivery service for our food. We were isolated, asked to stay away from our friends and our family residing outside of our household, and working remotely without in-person interaction with our coworkers. We also put our preventative healthcare on hold and were required to postpone or cancel elective, yet very necessary, medical procedures. Specifically, a California health interview study found that 22.6% of Kern County residents either delayed or completely skipped needed medical care in 2021 due to COVID-19. And that same study found that Kern County people who rated their health status as excellent decreased from 26.7% in 2019 to 22.7% in 2020, to ultimately 17.8% in 2021. An American Psychological Association survey found that nationwide, 42% of adults experienced an undesired weight gain during the pandemic, with an average of 29 pounds gained, and 10% gained more than 50 pounds. For these reasons, Kern County Public Health and Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services joined forces and launched the Grounded in Health 2023 Initiative, which will focus on a new health topic each month throughout 2023 to help our community on their road to a healthier lifestyle. These health topics will range from our more typical recommendations of exercising regularly, eating healthy, and seeking out preventative care, to some more non-traditional, yet equally important, recommendations like taking time out of your busy schedule for yourself, taking a break from electronic devices, and spending more time with your children, friends, and family. Throughout this initiative, both Kern County Public Health and Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services will provide tips, resources, and education on these monthly topics from a physical health and mental health perspective. Throughout this year, you will see billboards and buses wrapped in an oak tree, which symbolizes strength, stability, and power. Every limb, trunk, and root includes a health-related topic. That will be a month-long focus. We have created a new website, kerngroundedinhealth.com, that will include education, tips, resources, and tools relevant to each monthly topic to help our community on their journey. There will be commercials on TV, radio, and in the movie theaters to serve as a helpful reminder of the importance for us to live our lives grounded in health. Understanding how our bodies and minds work together strengthens our ability to make positive choices for our own health and the health of our children, and can help our community to live a happier, healthier, and more fulfilling life. Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I will now hand it over to Stacy Kuhwahara, who joined me.
Good morning, Stacy. Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Flores and Supervisors. My apologies, I'm navigating jury services this morning, so I'm really excited I get to be here to share specifically because our partnership with public health to support wellness and the health for our Kern County residents is something we're very excited about. The time is excellent to be doing this initiative, and it's a very meaningful message to be bringing to our community. As Bryn mentioned, the connection between physical and mental health is very strong. Individuals with mental health issues are more likely to have chronic health conditions and more barriers seeking treatment for preventable conditions. There are established correlations between depression and anxiety with health conditions like diabetes, chronic respiratory disease, and heart disease. And people with significant mental health conditions have a 10- to 25-year reduction in life expectancy. We know our thoughts and feelings and behavior are very closely connected, and the extent of this connection is often underestimated. Mental health is enhanced and supported when we treat ourselves in a holistic manner by addressing our physical health, our emotional health, our spiritual health, and our social health patterns and behaviors. Approaching just one of these areas has potential and meaningful impacts on all of our other domains of health. In addition to the increase in health concerns that have been a global issue for the last few years, we're seeing a significant increase in individual suffering with mental health conditions. And the increase in intensity in the conditions as a baseline when they're requesting help is also getting worse. So early intervention and prevention is key. This starts with very small steps, and doing something to improve our health in one domain is going to impact all of our others. So for these reasons, we're extremely excited to be partnering to promote this whole health initiative. So, for these reasons, we're extremely excited to be partnering to promote this whole health initiative. Our message is about encouraging statements about balance, integration, and choices. It's an opportunity to improve our lives in a very meaningful way, and we're excited to get grounded in health and start 2023 off very well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stacy. One sec. My screen is saying that Supervisor Perez has the floor. Was that the old one? Oh, the board, okay. Thank you. Disregard that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any, thank you so much. Do any members of... Any comments from the board or comments from the public? Okay, hearing done. We'll move on to the next item. This is also an item under Public Health Services, item number fifty-six, Presentation on the Child Death Review Team Report from Calendar Year 2017-2021. And Bryn Kerrigan will also be giving the staff update. Welcome again.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am joined this morning by Chad Casto, Public Health Program Specialist and Kern County Child Death Review Team Chair. The item before your board this morning is a presentation on the Child Death Review Team Report for the calendar year 2017 through 2021. Authorized by 1988 California State Legislation and pursuant to California Penal Code, the county may establish an inter-agency team to review child deaths with the goal of reducing childhood deaths associated with abuse, neglect, and other preventable causes. In Kern County, we have a multidisciplinary team with representation from many agencies who meet monthly to review child deaths that have been brought to our attention by the coroner's office, including deaths that were accidental or unintentional, homicides related to child abuse, suicides, or natural with unusual circumstances. The purpose of these reviews is to identify deaths that may have been avoided, report on such deaths as they occur in Kern County, and identify any systemic gaps, and implement recommendations to prevent similar deaths from occurring. Typically, the Child Death Review Team Report is presented to your board on an annual basis. The last report presented to your board was for calendar year 2018, which was presented on December seventeenth, 2019. As your board is aware, the COVID-19 pandemic significantly impacted the operations of our department, as well as of all of the Child Death Review Team participating agencies. While we did not present the Child Death Review Team Report to your board during 2020 and 2021, the Child Death Review Team meetings continued throughout the pandemic, as did our initiatives aimed to prevent child deaths. From 2017 to 2021, six hundred and thirty-four child deaths occurred. Two hundred and sixty-five were reviewed by the Child Death Review Team and included in this report. One hundred and two of those deaths were determined to be accidental. Thirty-eight were determined to be homicide. Thirty-two were determined to be natural. Twenty-two were determined to be suicide, and seventy-one were undetermined. Throughout this reporting period, accidental was the leading manner of death, rising eighty-six percent from 2017 to 2021. Suicide deaths increased sixty percent from 2017 to 2021. During this five-year comparison, motor vehicle accidents were the leading cause of accidental deaths, accounting for forty-four of the one hundred and two accidental deaths. In 2020 and 2021, acute fentanyl toxicity became a cause of accidental death, accounting for seven of the deaths during these two years. Gunshot wounds accounted for more than half of all homicides, with twenty of the thirty-eight homicide deaths. Suicide deaths continue to rise, with asphyxia hanging as the main cause, accounting for fourteen of the twenty-two suicide deaths. Sudden unexplained infant death was the leading cause of undetermined deaths, accounting for fifty-eight of the seventy-one undetermined deaths. From 2017 to 2021, children less than one year old accounted for one hundred and nine, or forty-one percent, of all child deaths reviewed by the team. The number of deaths each year in this age group were fairly consistent, with the exception of 2018, which experienced less total deaths than the other four years in this review. Undetermined was the leading manner of death in this age range, accounting for sixty-five, or sixty percent, of the deaths. Out of the one hundred and nine deaths in this age range, sixty-two, or fifty-nine percent, had an unsafe sleeping environment present at the time of death. During this five-year comparison, accidental deaths accounted for twenty-nine, or sixty-one percent, of the forty-seven deaths in children aged one to four. Fifteen, or fifty-two percent, of the accidental deaths were due to drowning. There were seven motor vehicle accident deaths that occurred during this timeframe that included pedestrian accidents, unrestrained children, or improperly restrained car seats. Deaths in five-to-nine-year-olds accounted for eighteen, or seven percent, of all cases reviewed by the team from 2017 to 2021. In 2018, there were no deaths in this age group. For the past five years, most deaths were accidental, which accounted for eleven, or sixty-one percent, of the deaths. Nine, or eighty-two percent, of those eleven accidental deaths were the result of motor vehicle accidents. Sixty-six percent of all preventable deaths in the ten-to-fourteen-year-old age group were seen in 2020 and 2021. Twelve, or fifty-two percent, of the twenty-three deaths in this two-year span were considered accidental and resulted from motor vehicle accidents, fentanyl intoxication, or drownings. All five homicides in this age group were by gunshot wounds. During this five-year period, forty-three percent of the fifty-six deaths in the five-to-seventeen-year-old age range were accidental. Of these twenty-four accidental deaths, seventeen were motor vehicle accident-related, six were fentanyl or other drug-related, and one was caused by drowning. Homicide deaths accounted for twenty-five percent of the deaths in this age group, age range, and we saw a marked increase in 2020 and 2021. All fourteen homicides were caused by gunshot. Suicide deaths accounted for twenty-nine percent of the deaths in this age range and saw a significant increase in 2021. While the coroner identified a total of nine infant deaths that were directly attributed to an unsafe sleep environment over this five-year time period, there were a total of sixty-two cases where an unsafe sleep environment was present, but not necessarily found by the coroner to be a contributory cause of death for the child. Unsafe sleep environments continue to be a concern in Kern County. Community partners like Kern Medical, Bakersfield Memorial Hospital, Kern Literacy Council, First Five Kern, and our department have worked to provide pack-and-plays and safe sleep education to parents and guardians and medical providers. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, suicide is connected to other forms of injury and violence as people who have experienced violence, including child abuse, bullying, or sexual violence, have a higher suicide rate. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for children aged ten to fourteen nationwide. A majority of Kern suicides between 2017 and 2021 were in the fifteen-to-seventeen-year-old category, accounting for sixteen of the twenty-two suicide deaths. 2021 saw a three-hundred percent increase in suicide deaths from 2020. Hanging is the most-used method of suicide for adolescents in Kern County, accounting for ten, or forty-five percent, of the suicide deaths during this period. Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services offers several programs for suicide prevention. The key to prevention is to ensure that parents, teachers, probation officers, neighbors, friends, and others who care for our youth can recognize signs and know how to help. Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services also offers programs for those who are currently in crisis and programs that assist in facilitating healing and mitigating the negative effects of exposure to suicide. The following recommendations are the result of the Kern County Child Death Review Team's work over this five-year period in review. The first is to increase community awareness, education, and resources related to the association between unsafe sleep environments and sudden infant death syndrome and sudden unexplained infant death syndrome. This includes continuous training and education to perinatal care providers and hospital staff, and providing safe sleep materials that can be distributed to patients, and ensuring that all infants born in Kern County have a safe sleep environment upon discharge from the hospital. Number two is to decrease the incidence of suicide through raising community awareness, conveying strategies for identifying signs of self-harm, and developing resources for those at risk of suicide. Number three is to reduce childhood drowning deaths by increasing community awareness of water safety and the potential drowning dangers of pools, the Kern River, and other bodies of water. Number four is to increase the awareness of signs of abuse and neglect and promote resources that are available when abuse and/or neglect is suspected. Number five is to increase the awareness of motor vehicle and pedestrian safety among adolescents. And finally, number six is to increase community awareness and education regarding the dangers of fentanyl and the importance of the usage and availability of Narcan. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this concludes my presentation. Myself, Mr. Casto, and fellow Child Death Review Team members in the audience are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bryn. Any comments or questions from our board? Any comments or questions from the audience? Thank you for the presentation, and thank you that it's an important reminder that these are not just numbers, that these are lives, children's lives. Appreciate working on awareness, education, strategies to get those numbers as low as possible. So, thank you all to the composition of the team. Okay, so... Okay, moving on. That was not an action item, so we're going to move on. Having no more items to consider in open session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn a closed session to consider the following items under County Administrative Office, item number sixty-two, under County Council, items sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five. Okay, I have a motion, and without objection, we are adjourned.